I'd like to call to order the special meeting, June twenty ninth, of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioner Welker, would you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'd like to get a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Welker?
Here.
Commissioner McCafferty is absent. Commissioner Somerville is absent. Commissioner Schweitzer?
Here.
Commissioner Metters?
Here.
Vice Chair Passiak?
Here.
Chair Merritt?
Here, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we'll go to item four minutes, which I don't believe we have any. So we'll pass that one. Any staff reports, Will?
Negative.
Thank you. So we're gonna go straight to item six A. Consideration and possible recommendation of approval to Town Council to rezone parcel one zero two, one zero, excuse me, one zero two dash zero one dash two one nine K, and parcel one zero two dash zero one dash two one nine M, containing approximately five point oh eight acres and six point eight six acres of real property, located at the northwest and southwest corners of the intersection of East Road four and a half south, and South Road one east respectfully, from commercial light to commercial heavy with a planned area development PAD overlay. The applicant is Keith Hughes, Will?
Alrighty, good evening Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the commission. Before you, as read, is a requested rezone for two parcels from commercial light to commercial heavy with a planned area development. Now, this is the second time that the commission has seen this item. However, this time, it is associated with that planned area development. So we're a little different coming in from it. Subject parcels are located at East Road four and a half south, and South Road one east, on the northwest and southwest side. In the general area, you have the Windy Plaza, Commercial Center, extra space RV, or, and mini storage, and horses with heart. Together, the property's total approximately twelve acres, and it currently vacant. The general plan land use designation for these two parcels is commercial multifamily. This is the same designation for the properties directly north, west, and south. To the east, you have state land that is slotted or designated for future growth areas, and then two potential community cores to the north at the four south intersection, and then at the south at the five south intersection. The request of commercial heavy planned area development conforms with the general plan. To the north, south, and west of the subject properties, you have parcels that are zoned commercial light. To the east, you have the state zoning. The request of commercial conforms to the general, commercial heavy conforms to the general area, as the area is predominantly commercial. As previously mentioned, this is the second time that this item has come before the commission. The neighborhood meeting was held previously on April twenty eighth. It went before the commission, then on May fourth, and subsequently Town Council on May twenty fifth, in which the council requested that the item come back through with a planned area development, in order to restrict the uses on this parcel, as council felt that several of the more intensive commercial heavy uses were not ideal for this area. The applicant was also to, asked to provide a conceptual plan for the RV park. The applicant has done so. So we, he resubmitted with his conceptual plan for the RV park, which is proposed on the southern parcel. He would also like the uses on the parcel to be restricted in regards to the commercial heavy uses to RV in nature, similar to recreational vehicle park, recreational vehicle storage, a car wash that can accommodate RVs, a recreational vehicle maintenance, and then a portion of the northern property to be utilized as mini storage. All of these are specific to commercial heavy restrictions. Commercial heavy does allow for all other commercial light uses, which is currently allowable with the existing zoning on this property. The applicant is wishing to retain that portion of commercial heavy as well. Excuse me here. So his request of a PAD is not to ask for any variation from town code. This is at a request from Town Council, specific to restricting the commercial heavy, more intensive uses of commercial heavy. So there is really no grounds for the applicant to provide things greater than what code requires. With that being said, the applicant is proposing a higher level of community open space amenities, which code does not require, such as this possible splash pad or pickable court in the open space area. With that being said, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the Town Council to rezone approximately eleven point nine four acres of real property, from the commercial light zoning district to the commercial heavy zoning district, with a planned area development zoning district, in order to develop the property with the following stipulations. One, the property, the uses for the property be restricted to accommodate the developer's requests regarding commercial heavy uses. Commercial light uses will still be allowed per code. Right-of-way dedication be made along East Road four and a half south, and South Road one east, and street improvements be made on the same roads, East Road four and a half south, and South Road one east. With that, we'll open it up to questions or discussion from the commission.
Alright, anybody on the commission have questions for Will? Just to clarify a couple of things, Will. So, the commercial light application on top of the commercial heavy, it's already zoned to do that, but he wants to retain his opportunities to do commercial light?
That is correct. Commercial heavy zoning has a specific section in code that allows for all permitted commercial light and conditional commercial light uses to be allowed outright under commercial heavy. The applicant is requesting to retain that ability, and then only restrict the commercial heavy uses towards the RV park, and then the mini storage.
Okay, so is there more intensive commercial light available on a commercial heavy property?
No. So, the more intensive would be associated with a conditional use permit, but the ones that council was concerned about were petroleum storage, outdoor commercial kennels, welding shop, fabrication yards, contractor yards, bottling and packaging plants, things that are a little bit more outside of that commercial light district.
Okay, so the commercial light application that he's retaining is exactly what he has right now?
Absolutely.
Okay. Alright, anybody have any questions? Thank you, Will.
Yeah.
Would the owner like to come up and speak?
Good evening, I'm Keith Hughes, and I'm proposing to do an RV park with RV storage and mini storage. It has come before you before, I'm not changing anything. I did bring in conceptual drawing for you, to give you an idea what we're looking for. I've allowed some green space or green areas for, you know, picnics and that type of thing, where the leach fields and different things like that'll be there. So, it's gonna be a more upscale RV park, but I do wanna be able to have covered RV storage, and, and also have mini storage, and the ability to allow my clients there to have maintenance on their vehicles and things like that. As far as motorhomes, no, no cars or trucks. You know, like if you gotta winterize them or something like that, I wanna have the ability to do that.
Right there on site.
But, and what I also, and what Will stated was, the CL zone is already there. So I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that if, for some reason, who knows what this world's coming to, if we wanted to go back to a CL zone for something, that I had that ability to do that, which is already, it's zoned that way right now anyways. I'm asking for the CH only to get the RV park in.
Okay. Alright, anybody have questions for the owner?
The conceptual's just, just the RV part, so...
The conceptual's only on the seven because I didn't have time, this was kind of a rushed meeting, and, but what I'm asking for is, on the other piece, I'm wanting to do are only RV related. So the PAD that I'm looking at is gonna be RV related items, for instance, storage units, I consider that to be related, maybe you guys don't, but the storage units, the covered RV storage, I think is critical. So I'm having covered RV storage, some mini storage, and then on the full seven acres, I'm gonna have the RV park.
And how many RV spots?
There's ninety. That's a, that's really not that many for that parcel, but that's what I can do based on AD EQ and the septic systems.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Will, would you come back up to the podium, please? So, on the, on the, the, the mini storage part of it, on commercial light, which is his zoning right now, he would be able to get a conditional use permit to do the mini storage anyways, there's one right up the street from there, am I correct on that?
You are correct.
Okay, so we're not really sticking our necks out very much on that.
I would agree.
Okay. Thank you.
The RV car wash, that's gonna be recycled water?
Whatever AD EQ Arizona Department of Environmental Quality regulations are for car washes, specific to septic and well, I know that there is a certain level of recycling with an auto wash, I don't know the specific details on that, but there will be recycled element to that.
Since it's not going into the city sewerage?
Correct. I can ask our Public Works Director Frank Marbury to kind of expand on my limited knowledge of that, if he has.
Sure, and that's, it's pretty much what Will said, that the regulations, since they're on septic, would fall under state regs, but I'm sure there would be treatment and/or recycling needs associated with that, to meet the state regulations for, for car wash facilities before it goes into the septic system.
That, or do they, is it a possibility that, is it a possibility that it can be used for their own landscaping, watering use, for non-potable water?
If it made state regulations for that.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we have a proposal before us to basically approve what we've already approved, only with a PAD overlay on it, to limit the commercial heavy application to use RV applications. Seeing as how, I'd like to open it up for the public portion of the meeting. Would anybody here like to step up from the public? You have three minutes, please step up to the podium and state your name.
Thank you, my name is John Buss, B-U-S-S. I do not have the background and the knowledge of land use planning and development that each of you have, but I can remember, in college fifty years ago, I took two college-level courses in development planning and zoning, and the one thing that sticks in my brain is buffer zones. You never have industrial next to residential. There's a lot of things you don't do, and that's why, I believe, the planning and zoning for the town of Chino Valley years ago, zoned this light commercial for a reason. Light commercial would allow office, restaurant, retail, personal services, and things like that. But, there's again reasons why, because of the residential that's been there for sixty years, it would not be compatible with commercial heavy. Now, for example, if, if there was an approval for parcel one oh two zero one two nineteen K, the northern, the northerly of the two in question, to go to commercial heavy, then it may be that the owner of two fourteen C, directly to the north, would apply for commercial heavy, maybe get it approved. Three oh four, directly to the north of that, get it approved. And then, the guy owning two seventeen K would say, hey, what about me? Those are all contiguous, as you may know, between the highway and road four, excuse you, road one east, north of road four and a half south, and ending at road four south. Once three parcels away at two seventeen K has heavy commercial, then just sixty feet away, there are three residential homes there, with a combined net worth of three point four million dollars, all three of which have changed or are changing hands as we speak, over the last three years, meaning all three buyers, investing that kind of money, have had the right to check out the land, planning around it, including myself, seeing that there's commercial light, and seeing what that entails, sounds good to a prospective buyer. There are eight part, eight buildings on those three pieces of property. One of them is zoned AR five, which means they can run some water, and, you know, use a little bit of water. And we know that water, what I've learned my last three years in Chino Valley, is a sacred thing to talk about. And when you take a parcel, and you wanna put up six houses per acre, and, and use all that water out on road two north, one west, it's quite a consideration for how much water usage there would be. Water usage is a secondary thing for me, but my, my thing is, those three homes worth, as I said, quite a fair amount of money, with major investments of three mature individuals over the last three years, could have sixty feet away from the westerly of those three properties, manufacturing, welding shops, commercial outdoor kennels. Now that sounds good about midnight, you know, commercial outdoor kennels. Is that my time up?
Yep.
Can I have thirty seconds?
You, I think you made your point, that you're very concerned, and you're not in favor of this at all.
We have dropped five feet per year of static, our static water level. We're dropping five feet per year right now. And again, major investment by people right there, to have the use of the water, and we didn't bargain to have commercial kennels, manufacturing, welding shops. Heavy commercial would be hard to stop, if you approve heavy commercial, because those are not conditional use permits for the items of use that I mentioned, once it's zoned heavy commercial. I know the ins and outs of what you do, but it's not a conditional use thing to put up a petroleum below ground, bring the trucks in, pump the petroleum, and take it out every morning at five AM. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to step up to the podium and speak? Step up to the podium and please state your name.
My name's Randy Covert, it's C-O-V-E-S in Victor, E-R-T, and I live at ten forty eight, East Road four, south. I'm right at the, the corner, I'm the closest residential property to this development. And I apologize for not being here with your earlier meetings, coming to this. I drove by it several times, and I missed the little sign in the tall grass.
Done that myself.
And, but I am very concerned, because we bought the property, and we've put a lot of money into the property, and if any of you know the corner, there are a lot of old junk vehicles and everything else, and we've really cleaned it up, and are making it really nice, investing a lot of proper, money into the property. Another concern I have is just the traffic patterns, because those roads are not designed right now to handle forty or fifty thousand pound vehicles, and that's what a class A diesel pusher motor home is weighing. And, a lot of those rigs are sixty-five, seventy foot long, attached. I don't know what the size of the, the lots are for the RVs, but it looks tight. And I don't know, I didn't see anything on there either, as far as where the septic treatment is going.
We can, when you answer some of these questions, we'll bring that up and show it to you.
Okay. But, I appreciate it, but it's just my concern, being that close to everything that's going on, and we get a lot of traffic there now, and a lot of people out there walking all the time. It's just, just a concern with the change, and owning that property, changing it from light to heavy, again, now what's gonna come in? You know, we bought the property less than two years ago, and now we're already changing to heavy, you know, real close to our property. So that's a, a big concern for us as well. But, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Alright, seeing as how no more volunteers, we're gonna close the public portion of the meeting. So we have a couple of questions. Will, I'm gonna start with you first, please. It's clear that the concern about this commercial heavy in that location is that the surrounding homeowner property owners are concerned that heavy, commercial heavy will just continue right up the line of their property. Can you tell us how that is being limited by what we're, what you're proposing tonight?
So right now, the original application that was before you was for a straight commercial heavy zoning, which Town Council, I would say, agree with that presumption, that it could be a lot more intensive, which is why they asked the applicant to bring it back forward through the process with the planned area development, to essentially cross out the possibility of those uses ever being allowed with this rezone. This commercial heavy rezone will be restricted specifically to those RV situated, or similar uses, along with those existing commercial heavy that he's already entitled to, sorry, commercial light that he's already entitled to. As far as future developments requesting the rezone, it is my opinion that they will receive the same scrutiny that Town Council has provided the applicant today, and that they would request that the uses be more similar in nature to the lighter commercial, and not that heavier, intensive, commercial heavy use.
And, by changing this zoning tonight, we are setting a bit of a precedent, but it does seem to be that it's limited in its scope.
That is correct.
And the reason, if I'm, just, I'm asking this question, what is the reason that applicant wanted to go with the commercial heavy zoning to begin with?
The reason the applicant has requested this is because it is only allowed within commercial heavy of an RV park with greater than twenty-six units. Commercial light allows up to, it's either twenty-five or twenty-six. To breach that cap, you have to be rezoned to commercial heavy.
Okay, so the property that's there now, is it adequate to handle the extra spaces that he's there?
That would be more geared towards the technical review aspect, to ensure that it is capable of supporting through well and septic. It'll be up to the applicant to prove that it is in line with AD, or it satisfies state regulations as far as water usage and discharge.
I was thinking more in terms of the size of the property versus the spaces, not the water in the septic.
Oh, let me pull it up here. So, the applicant stated ninety spaces are his proposal at this point in time. As far as if the site can accommodate that, I, I would say that it, we would have to really evaluate that during the technical review aspect. He's really just seeking the ability to pursue it this forward, before getting into that technical review. So, he will likely have to provide some sort of traffic analysis to ensure that circulation works, that ingress and egress is, is within code, and aspects like that. Does that answer your question?
It did, because basically, technical review is gonna, is going to ensure that it's capable of doing what you're there saying it can do.
Absolutely.
So we had a question about the location of the septic area, could you please point that out?
So the septic area is located on the westerly boundary and extends to the southern boundary. I'm not one hundred percent sure on the square footage of that, but it's his septic area or his leach area, and then it's also gonna be his open space greens, green space area for the development.
And again, all that's designed and set through the state and also Yom Pei County.
Correct.
Environmental Service. Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I, I have one question. This is more, I guess, clarification, but it was mentioned in the public comments about residential property and a concern of commercial heavy creeping its way north.
Sure.
These residential properties, they're already on commercial light zoning, correct?
I'll pull up the map here for you.
Mr. Passiak, can you please pull your microphone down? It's just speaking to the mic.
I'm sorry. From what I'm seeing, it looks like they're on commercial light already.
Correct, so I believe that the, Mr. Buss, and I apologize. So we have single-family residential one acre minimum on the northeast corner, and then some AR five further east.
Yeah, I, I know, but what I'm saying is that everything north of these properties are commercial light, and our residential properties on that, those commercial light right now, are not.
As far, the homes, properties with homes are...
No.
What he's asking is, on this commercial light, this pink, reddish pink area, the properties that the, the two gentlemen have spoke about, those properties are not located on the commercial light property.
Correct, they are located outside of that area, within a residential zoning, SR one, and then AR five.
Okay. That's all I needed to know, thank you.
If I may, real quick, if I could interrupt, just, I think there is one little island of commercial light to the east.
Yeah, that's...
There is.
But that's the only one.
If you look at general plan here too, as well, you can see that the commercial multifamily designated per general plan extends completely along Road four south, East Road four south. So, per general plan, at one point in time, the town envisioned that the commercial would continue farther down as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so the concern... Go ahead.
If you continue on east on four south, that goes out to that solar panel plant, isn't it?
Eventually, yes, yeah.
So there's already heavy equipment going out there, carrying panels?
The, yeah, the zoning for that piece of property's a little different, they're a public utility, so they're, they were able to do that with AR five zoning, as it was a public utility.
Okay, so anybody else have any other questions? So just to recap a couple of things, the PAD overlay is going to limit the commercial heavy opportunities for this property to, strictly for RV usage. It removes all of the other opportunities for petroleum storage, and some of the other things that we've heard spoke about. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and so the only way that there'll be any opportunity for commercial heavy to be approved on these things is going through this very same process, and the likelihood of those things not, the commercial heavy opportunities to extend into those areas with full commercial heavy possibilities is pretty remote, given the feedback we've gotten from City Council on this right now.
Yeah, correct, that is my opinion.
Okay. Alright. Any other questions? Thank you, Will. Okay, so, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. I recommend the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the Town Council to rezonate approximately eleven point nine four acres of real property, from commercial light zoning district to commercial heavy zoning district, with a planned area development, in order to develop the property with the stipulations as outlined in the staff report.
Okay. Which include, if I may just expound a bit?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. The stipulations are, use of the property limited to only the following, recreational vehicle park, recreational vehicle storage, car wash that can accommodate RVs, recreational vehicle maintenance, and a portion of the northern property to be utilized as mini storage, that's one stipulation. Second stipulation is, per Town Unified Development Ordinance, Table five, I'm sorry, Chapter five point three point two, Table five, minimum requirement right-of-way dedication is followed, follows, total of sixty feet, thirty foot north and thirty foot south of the section line, on East Road four, four and one half south, to be dedicated for right-of-way. Provide a total of fifty foot dedicated right-of-way for the South Road one east, then per Town Unified, Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter five point three point two, Table five dash one, off-site half-width improvements as, as follows. East Road four one half south, fourteen foot minimum roadway width without on-street parking, six-inch vertical curb and gutter, five-foot minimum concrete sidewalk...
six inch vertical curb and gutter, five foot minimum concrete sidewalk. On south road one east, twenty five point five minimum roadway width without on-street parking, six inch vertical curb and gutter, and five foot minimum concrete sidewalk. Thank you, Gary.
Chair, if I might interrupt here, um, briefly, I want to clarify, there, there might have been some poor verbiage on the use outline, I believe in the staff report that it was worded as only those uses. I want to make sure that it reflects that it is ju- these only, only these uses in regards to commercial heavy, and then the commercial light is still allowed per code.
Okay, which he has that at this point.
Correct.
Do we need to amend that or no? Well, if we're going to remove the word limited to only the following, we maybe need to conclude some wordage of en- entitling him to the commercial light application also.
I would just, just in case to cover the basis, yeah.
All right, so Gary, you want to rephrase your? And you don't have to read the whole thing out, the main point I was making was the limiting. Okay, so it says limited only to the following, and it lists the recreational vehicle storage stuff. We also need to include that, that all rights to commercial light, which he has now, would be included in.
Make it an F.
Okay.
Make that F.
I guess item four, the, um, parcels will still retain commercial light zoning.
Oh, okay.
I guess usage of commercial.
I'll second it.
Can we have a motion in a second? Just give me a minute here, please. Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions or concerns? Hey, this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Commissioner McCafferty is absent, Commissioner Somerville is absent, Commissioner Switzer?
Um, reversing my former position, it'll be a no.
Commissioner Metters?
Aye.
Vice Chair Pasiak?
Aye.
Chair Merritt?
Aye.
And so as part of our usual routine, um, the nay vote, we would like to have a comment to send back to town council.
I think it's a great project, I just think it's the wrong area for it. Uh, everything in the area is zone commercial light. I think it does set a precedence to commercial heavy. Even with the stipulation, uh, planning and zoning changes, councils change, uh, that could change in the future where they don't, that, they would allow commercial heavy. Because this has been zone commercial heavy. I also think a project of this magnitude should, uh, be on municipal water and sewer. And I know there's no chance for that, unfortunately, where it's located. I think it's duly needed in Chino and the county needs more RV parks, but just not in this location.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so the motion is carried. All right. We're going to move forward to item seven, non-public hearing items. I don't think we have any of those.
We have none.
Um, item eight, discussion items.
We have none of those either.
Okay, so item nine is public comments. This is a call to the public as an opportunity for the public to address the commission on any issue within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. You're limited to speak for three minutes. Would anybody like to come up and speak? Okay, so we'll move past that and go to item ten, which is a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you.